Now, okay. Before we call the meeting to order, I want to make sure that everyone has had an opportunity to fill out their green sheets and get them to Laurel Day, sitting over here in the corner. So we'll wait a couple of minutes. I see some people coming in. I want to make sure we receive all of our green sheets.
And the green sheets are a request to address the board?
Request, yes, to address the board. I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. Well, Heather, give us a sign or anything. Why should I wait?
She is, I can see the cameras and there's no one else coming in.
So, we're okay to start?
No.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the October the 11th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is now called to order. I want to thank, I want to say thank you to those who have come tonight to share your opinions. We hear our public comments that are requested via the green sheets on the table by the door. Public comments will begin after the superintendent's report. We may choose to take a brief recess if the public comments are extended beyond a normal timeframe. After all received requests have been heard, we will move on with the business of the school board meeting. As a reminder, we take public comments near the beginning of every regular meeting of the school board, and if you miss the deadline tonight or wish to speak again at our next meeting, that will be held on Monday, October the 25th. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, October 11th, 2021 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote?
Director Tominski, Director Borcherdin.
Aye.
Director Huesinger.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Humble.
Aye. Next, we'll turn to Superintendent Bush for her report.
Thank you very much, President Humble, and welcome, everyone, this evening. So, I just want you to know that this month is Principal Month. So, we are celebrating the National Principals Month. This is Linda Reisak. She's principal of Harding Middle School, and just want to give a extreme gratitude and thank you to the leadership work that happens at the principal and the building level. They are true difference makers. They are for their families and kids and our staff members every day. They are the leaders of learning in their building. They support the needs every day of what's happening in their building. I have seen principals subbing for teachers pretty much on a daily basis this year, organizing, reorganizing meetings, responding and supporting to individual student needs, working with their parents, and even through some difficult, very difficult trying times, of course, over the past year. So, shout out to our principals and all the work that they do, and just if you, if you work for one or you have a relationship with your principal, which I'm sure you all do, just a little note of thanks for them this month. So, thanks, thanks to our principals.
Secondly, we have been, as you know, I mentioned this last month or last time, but we didn't quite get to all of the deeper dive in our new website. So, if you take a look at our new website, this is just a reminder to everyone, this was launched last month. Would encourage folks on our new URL, which is crschools.us, to bookmark that, bookmark the new pages from our new website. It is a different URL, and it takes a little better than a month for Google to transition everything over. So, if you were still at the cr.k12.ia.us, all that data, if that's still in your bookmarks, takes a while for everything to get re-acclimated. So, just a little reminder for everybody that that new website is there with new information, updated information, and really just clean and concise and easy to find things. So, thanks to all the work for our communications team on that and our IT team. Next, we have update on our mitigation efforts. And so, this continues to be our updates coming from our Friday information. And as you can see, I did include the update from last time, from two weeks ago, and our data actually has changed a bit over a two-week time period. So, as you can see, the first area is the Lynn County seven-day positivity rate. Today, we're at a 14.2, and two weeks ago, we were at 17.4. So, we want, we're so close and right there in that, trying to get that to that below 14%. Soon as that does, it'll go to the green zone, which means that we are closer to lifting a mask mitigation effort in our district. There are several questions about what defines a pandemic level. That is defined by the Iowa Department of Public Health, and we have a link now on our website per some requests from feedback from community members. Thank you for that. Feedback always helps us get better. And so, we have provided that link on our website, what defines a pandemic level. But it is positivity rate. It is also hospitalizations, and then just the bigger picture of what defines a pandemic. And so, as soon as we are lifted out of the pandemic level, which things are going again, as I said, in a better direction in regards to our seven-day positivity rate, that impacts then the pandemic level. And that is defined by county, not by the state. So, that's good news for our Iowa counties to keep it local. And then finally, we are still below 2% right now. That's been true since the last time that we met in regards to our student positivity rate as a district. And then finally, there has been a little bump up in the zero to 17 age group locally for Lynn County. And so, that is not disaggregated by school district. That is the total and county rate. And so, although our district is showing fewer positive cases, there are more students or aged children from zero to age 17, just in the past couple of weeks, a little bump there. But it can waver, and so, we hope to see that trajectory go in the next direction. As you've been seeing in the news, we don't get information any sooner than anyone else in regards to vaccinations. If folks were looking for vaccinations for our children under the age of 12, we don't have any more information around that other than what's been reported in the news. But it looks as though that is on the horizon in the coming months, weeks to months. And so, we're waiting to hear more about that. And if that becomes available, we certainly will communicate to our families about how they can get access to that, if that's a path they choose for their kids. And then finally, last piece is, this went out in communication in our Friday newsletter. We have been updating the board in regards to our construction projects. But just as a little reminder, we had a facility master plan that was passed in 2018. It had a timeline, and that's that, those three color blocks at the top of the screen here that represents about a 20-year timeline. But it was pretty loose. And notice there weren't dates on that because we knew we had to be, project about a 20- to 25-year project, but it would depend on a lot of information. So, we are in what's called Tier One, Phase One of that project, which were the sites at Coolidge and Jackson, which are now West Willow, and to be Maple Grove. Once that Tier One, Phase One project is completed, we are looking at the repurposing of Truman. So, last year, as you know, we went through a boundary study, went through a lot of input on the west side to define which families would be headed which direction to Maple Grove or West Willow from Truman. And then the question would be, what do we do next? And so, there was a pause that was created on the plan for that very purpose. So, right now, we are in the pause phase. As Maple Grove is being constructed, we are starting the data collection process, which is assessments of our buildings. The first facility master plan really focused on the elementary schools, and we knew the recommendation from the task force at that time was we would have to reassess our secondary facilities as well. So, we're doing an assessment of our buildings, focusing on a lot of our secondary buildings, financial updates in the capacity of our district to continually upgrade our buildings, and a reflection process of how has Tier One, Phase One gone so far? The Facility Master Plan Task Force will be reintroduced, and so, looking at members from the former Facility Master Plan Task Force. And then we also sent out an invitation for new members, the RE Newsletter on Friday. We'll push that out again this week and hope that folks want to participate in that process for input. And then finally, we'll take a deeper dive at our next board meeting about the current state updates. But this is just a high-level overview of what to expect for next board meeting. And that's all I have for you tonight.
And thank you for that update. Are there any board reports? Seeing none, we're going to be moving on to addressing the communications, delegations, and petitions. Board Secretary Day, do we have any speakers registered to address the board this evening?
President Humble and members of the board, we do have registered speakers for this evening.
Before we hear from those who have requested to address the board, I'd like to remind you to please state your name and address for the record when called. You will be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. In order to abide by the open meeting law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of the questions or comments from the individual speaking. We have received all of the requests and will listen to them, to all of them, in the order that they will receive. We ask that the audience refrain from outbursts as a matter of respect for all those in attendance. Laurel, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Paige Barber. Paige is here to speak to the board this evening about para wages and the mask mandate.
Paige Barber, 652 Affirm Lane, Fairfax, Iowa, speaking as an individual tonight. First of all, I just want to say thank you guys so much for sticking firm with the mask mandate. As somebody who has underlying health conditions and both last year and this year really struggled with the question of returning back to school, I really appreciate you guys putting the mask mandate into effect. The beginning of the school year, to be quite frank, was awful for me because of no mask mandate. I obviously wore my mask. Anybody who has read credited sites knows that the masks are to protect others, not yourself. So, even though I wore a mask to protect others, the school was not required to. Therefore, those who chose not to were endangering me, and it was a really hard place to be. So, I just want to start off by saying thank you. I know you guys have to deal with a lot of opinions on both sides of the matter for the mask mandate. But as loud as the other voices get, I just want you to know from an educator in the building, seeing the effect of the masks and the COVID-is-at-our-school emails decreasing and seeing that in effect every day in person, I really do, from the bottom of my heart, want to thank you for sticking firm to the mask mandate and having staff and student wear it. So, just when those voices get loud, know that somebody who is in the school every day and has to deal with it is very thankful for that. So, thank you very much for having masks. The second thing, if you'll remember, I spoke a couple of months ago about the para wages. And hello, I'm back. Yeah, so, to be honest, I went back and forth about what I wanted to say on this, speaking again, because part of me is very frustrated and part of me is very angry. But the other part of me also knows that the way to get things done is to not lash out in frustration and anger and to logically think through the due process of how to make changes happen and how to make changes occur. And so, I really struggled back and forth. And I think last board meeting created a really unique opportunity. I watched online, and to be honest, you guys looked a little frustrated, a little confused of what to do with people talking out and speaking. And you guys got to take a 10-minute recess and collect yourself. As a behavior-focused para, that would have been a good day for me, getting a break in the middle of that, just having to deal with people talking over me. I would have went home and honestly probably cracked open a nice cold apple juice and celebrated a great day. That's not the reality. Because I'm clumsy, outside of work, I got a shoulder injury this year, had a lot of complications from that and just the stress. I was in the hospital throwing up blood at 2:00 in the morning, tested negative for COVID. It was because of stress and a medication reaction, and I woke up and went to work the next day because I can't afford to miss it. I can't, the reality is, is I can't afford to miss work. And so, I warned my students, hey, if you see me throwing up blood, it's fine. I'm fine. Just ignore me. And then, a week later, my shoulder injury, which the severity of it is, we're looking at a herniated disc in my neck is where we're at right now for that. I had to choose between my safety and having a child attack another student. And so, of course, of course, I chose to protect the student. That's why I'm here. And they attacked me on the side that I have my shoulder injury. And so, I had to go get that looked at and then deal with workman's comp. Well, you had a prior injury. How do we know? And deal with all of this. And so, honestly, we are the lowest-paid support staff in the area now. And a lot of times, it's, well, you have great insurance. No. I'm sorry. We don't. To even start thinking of getting my shoulder fixed outside of workman's comp, because after the initial visit, they're not paying for anything because they can't prove, I'm looking at $350 to even get to the point where I can get an MRI to see if it's a herniated disc. So, when I ask you to please consider upping para wages, I'm at my wit's end. I don't know how to get it across to you guys. And you say you understand, but, and words are great. I'd rather have action. You can stay silent, and that's fine, but do something about it. I'm actively looking for other jobs that have better health insurance, and I don't plan on being with the district past this semester because I can't do it anymore. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly McMahon. Kelly is here to speak about early childhood, I think it's centers. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Kelly McMahon, reside at 5508 Dostal Drive, southwest Cedar Rapids, 52404. Thank you, Board of Directors, for your time this evening. As Chair of the ISCA Early Childhood Task Force, I want to invite you to attend a virtual conference co-sponsored by ISCA and Iowa ASCD on the Importance of Play in Pre-K Through Third Grade on November 16, 2021, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Registration for this conference is $25 and includes the viewing of the documentary, Chasing Childhood. Superintendent Dr. Michael Heinz, who is featured in the film, is serving as our keynote speaker and will hold a breakout session for administrators, Board of Directors, and district directors as part of the conference program. Roughly two months ago, I spoke before this board and briefly mentioned that our school day is not structured developmentally appropriately for our youngest learners. In far too many instances, our children are not getting sufficient time for child-directed play and are tasked with completing way too many assessments. This isn't a problem that is unique to Cedar Rapids Community School District. As most school districts across the nation began implementing practices that led to a decrease in play since the Nation at Risk report and the passage of No Child Left Behind. According to Dr. Peter Gray, who's also featured in the documentary, play is a natural vehicle through which children practice the skills and values of their culture and learn how to get along with others, solve their problems, regulate their emotions and impulses, and generally take control of their own lives. Self-education through play and exploration requires enormous amounts of unscheduled time, time to do whatever one wants to do without pressure, judgment, or intrusion from authority figures. That time is needed to make friends, play with ideas and materials, experience and overcome boredom, boredom, sorry, and learn from our own mistakes and develop passions. Play by definition is first and foremost, an activity that's self-chosen and self-directed. It's an activity that you are always free to quit. Activities that are chosen by teachers and directed or evaluated by teachers are not play. This means that our typical reading and math centers by definition should not be considered playtime because it is not child-directed, child-selected. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that children participate in 60 minutes of moderate to vigorous activity per day and suggested that recess be part of that. Recession is a necessary break in the day for optimizing a child's social, emotional, physical, and cognitive development. The American Academy of Pediatrics wrote in a 2013 policy statement, "In essence, recess should be considered a child's personal time, and it should not be withheld for academic or punitive reasons." Access to play is an equity issue. We have some schools, sorry, in our school district where children at the primary level only have one 30-minute recess per day. There are also some schools in our district where children at the primary level have access to two or three recesses a day. Taking recess time away for punitive reasons is a practice that is commonly practiced in almost all elementary schools. Center time in our kindergarten classroom is personalized learning through play for students at their early childhood level, which includes ages birth through grade three. This is a time where children practice the key executive functioning skills that are essential for success in school and in life. Yet, not all kindergarten classrooms have sufficient time in our daily schedule to implement planned review, as Highscope refers to this important time of day. The infamous Perry preschool study is planned to review. Based on research, up to 60 to 75 minutes per day should be spent on the process of planned review in kindergarten classrooms. In many cases, play in classroom centers do not happen in our kindergarten classrooms and definitely do not exist in grades one through three. Our youngest learners are over-excessed throughout the school year. Unfortunately, most of these assessments do not drive instruction. Last year, I lost six weeks of small group reading instruction to administer the district end-of-unit superkit assessment. This did not include completing the portions of the assessment that had to be completed in a one-on-one interview format. The wonderful lady that works as her professional classroom has spent roughly 12 hours last week completing the Unit 1 Math Assessment with my students, and is still not done completing that assessment because as most of the assessments are done for math, it's in a one-on-one interview format with kindergartners, as it should be. In addition to these assessments, I complete form of assessments roughly every two to four weeks that drive my instruction, as well as progress monitor the majority of my students on Fast for Governor Reynolds. Assessments should be more authentic and performance-based, not a paper pencil test where children select the best answer provided by a testing company or by the readings company or the math company that we purchase our materials from. I want to close my comments with three requests of the board and Superintendent Bush. First, I encourage the district directors using extra dollars to pay for every district administrator and ELC, content department leader to attend the November 16 virtual conference on the Importance of Play. Second, I ask that, under the guidance of Every Student Succeed Act, the CRCSD conducts an asset audit to determine how much instructional time is spent devoted to assessments, especially assessments that do not drive instruction. And third, I also ask that you complete an audit pertaining to the unstructured child-directed play for students in the form of recess and center time. And thank you for the mask mandate. I have slots since it's put in place. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Craig Sealy. Craig is here to speak about ideologies, agendas, sources, teaching methods.
Honorable school board members and the people that are attended, attending, it is government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Gettysburg Address by Abraham Lincoln. I'd like to finish what I didn't have time for at the last meeting. The American Biological Society concluded that in all the communities of the world, that there was not enough DNA difference to even validate the word race. So, they're appealing to all the governments of the world to remove the word race from their government documents. So, we have five words that we could remove that people use to, in a corrupt way, to separate us, black, red, yellow, and white, and the word race. What we really are, are different shades of brown. I had to force myself to start saying that, but I felt so much better when I did start saying it. Now, about global warming. Psalm 78:69 says that God established the earth to last forever, and there's other scriptures that balance that. So, what does that mean? Well, I know one thing that it means, that when people say, if we don't do something about global warming, the earth may be destroyed in eight to 12 years. And when little children hear that, they love to go outdoors. They love their environment. It's absolute child abuse to say that little kids hear that. And people shouldn't be saying that just for political gain. But let's analyze global warming a little bit more. God has promises in scripture. Seek ye first the kingdom of heaven and its righteousness, and all of your needs will be supplied down to your toothpick. It also says in Psalms 37:4, delight yourself in the Lord, and he will give you the desires of your heart. Well, God made these promises, especially to believers, but he wants those for everybody. Do you think he's going to let somebody destroy the earth or the weather? He even, there's documented weather events in the Revolutionary War that helped us win the war. We were outmanned, outgunned, outmilitarized. Who do you think was behind those documented weather events? It was the all-powerful God. So, global warming is just a way of getting something to scare people for power, money, and votes. You know, there's a scripture that says, "Except the Lord build the house, they that labor, labor in vain." That could be your own home. That could be a school district. That could be the city council, the city of Cedar Rapids, the Board of Supervisors, Lynn County, the state of Iowa, the Iowa Legislature. Only if the Lord is building that, they that labor are laboring in vain. Something to think about and research on good websites. Now, we're supposed to do all things in order. There's a lot of Christians sitting on the board. I've been talking to them. They even put it in their bios. Christians are not supposed to take other Christians to court. Christians are supposed to do all things in order. They're supposed to do everything in love. They're supposed to obey the laws of the land, et cetera, et cetera. It's something to think about when we have a dilemma, which it talks about in Proverbs, and that is, it's better to be in the corner of a house than to be in the same room with a woman that is upset. We have mothers that are upset because they love their children, and they can tell when something's going on or a whole bunch of things that are going on that are messing up their kids. And Christ said to the people, "It's better that a millstone was placed around your neck and you were cast into the sea than to harm one of these little ones."
Mr. Sealy, excuse me, your time is up.
Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amber Slaymaker. Amber's here to speak about mask mandates.
Amber Slaymaker, 7117 Rockwood Drive, southwest, by myself, I guess. As I said, my name's Amber. My husband and I currently have three kids in the Cedar Rapids School District, ranging from kindergarten all the way up to 11th grade. I first want to give a shout-outs to the teachers. They have personally been amazing, and my issue is not with them whatsoever. I blame them, not at all. I do, however, completely put the responsibility or lack their responsibility on you guys and the superintendent for forcing a mask mandate that not need to happen. Thanks to each of you, our children are now being forced to wear a mask while simultaneously being taught their voice and opinion doesn't matter if they don't align with yours. This is a far stretch from teaching students advocacy as you frequently state and is focused for your students. Noreen Bush responded to my initial complaint through an email full of half-truths at best to justify the reasons you were forcing this mask mandate. Lying and twisting facts, as that email did, is where I personally draw the line, and the pattern has the pattern has continued with your new COVID dashboard. With your data that never actually matches anything that you send out from the schools to the parents is a huge concern. But today, I don't really want to talk about facts because I think a lot of people are going to be here to do that. I wanted to talk more about a reminder of what your six key reasons are through the National School Board Association as to what your role is in our local order. Number two in particular, the school board represents the community's voice in a public education. Number six, the school board is the community's education watchdog, ensuring that taxpayers get the most out of their tax dollars. I highlight these two key facts because you were failing in both. You held a closed meeting to pass this mandate without even ensuring you were using the voice of this community, a key role in your actual positions. You could have gone to a school to see that masks were not being worn at a high rate. You could have taken the time to pull your parents to determine if mask mandate was wanted. If you would have simply taken the time to gain perspective from the community, as outlined in your key responsibilities, you would have easily seen that that does not support what is wanted in the community, which I assume, based on your current pattern of behavior, is because you already knew this and you had one thing you wanted to push through, a mask mandate. Everyone acknowledges that COVID is real. If wearing a mask is what an individual feels is best for them, they should absolutely have that choice. What many of the parents are demanding is that you follow the Constitution and allow parents to make the choice for their children, the appropriate decisions that concerns their health. The current argument in court is over ADA protection. What impact do you think you're having on students, such as my kindergartner, who attends a weekly speech therapy session to speech delays? Her therapist changes mask types, meaning going from cloth to plastic every single time when it's her turn, so she's able to show and practice how her mouth and tongue should be working to pronunciate certain sounds. By forcing her to wear a mask all day, you are taking away her ability to see a person's mouth as they speak, meaning you are putting her at an educational disadvantage compared to her peers going against ADA. As much as I despise the way that the school board is twisting the definitions of equal and equity, what does this say about your true thoughts on equity for each student in the school district? You can't support one side of the spectrum because it supports your viewpoint only. Iowa has had only three deaths in children since the start of the pandemic, and this is seriously the reason why you're trying to tout this forced policy as justification. To expand on your glaring double standards, Iowa averages 80 deaths a year due to vehicle-related incidents, just with our youth. Are children more likely to die in an accident than they are of COVID? Should parents now be concerned that you no longer want our kids to have the right to drive citing safety concerns as you've done with the mask mandate? I mean legally, there's no question here. You have no say. Why are you cherry picking what you want to force changes through citing the best interests of the community when the facts are clearly one-sided? In conclusion, I and many other parents ask that you drop this mask mandate and leave it up to personal choices, our last dates. Instead, start focusing on items within your control and scope, things that actually need attention, and I have a plethora of ideas that you could start with, whether that's actually addressing our failing curriculum, whether it's accountability for students in doing their work on a timely fashion, whether it's accountability on the district for completing 504 proficiently and accurately, or increasing parapay, to name just a few. In short, do the job you are elected to do. Be the advocate to our children throughout the community's viewpoints, not yours and just the educators.
Masks. Melissa Duffield.
We can't hear you very well.
Melissa Duffield from 2109 K Street. Last time I spoke to the board about my personal experiences, and today I'm going to start the first process of that 10,000 pages of documents of science I'm going to be giving you. Actual science at this board is causing child abuse by forcing masks. Noreen, you said in your parent letter that you are prioritizing the safety of students, so let's see. Listening to over 178 references, 65 scientific papers, 14 reviews, two meta-analyses, and 100 medical field experts from around the world. These people are from the CDC, the WHO, the World Medical Association, MIT, Oxford, just to name a few. The title of the document is "A Mask That Covers the Mouth and Nose Free From Undesirable Side Effects in Everyday Use and Free of Potential Hazards?" Conclusion: In the case of viral infections, masks appear to not only be less effective than expected, but also are not free of undesirable biological, chemical, physical, and psychological side effects. The study was done this year. Okay? The effects and dangers outlined in the medical fields include organ and organ system-related phenomenon accompanied by wearing masks that affected internal medicine, neurology, psychology, psychiatry, gynecology, dermatology, ENT, dentistry, sociology, occupational medicine, microbiology, pediatrics, as well as environmental, to say the least. In each of their papers, they use the word dangers, dangers, for adults and children. In children, these side effects are magnetized. Side effects that were documented in Singapore, 106 children aged between seven to 14 years of age, 100% of them had a, within five minutes, a CO2 level increase. I can't breathe. Kind of sounds familiar to me, and then it's proven in a study like that. Disturbed respiratory physiology in children can have a long-term disease-relevant consequences just from slightly elevated CO2 levels. This includes fatigue and concentration disorders. That should matter to our educators, right? Because if they can't concentrate, can't breathe, can't get educated. Masks both in the field is with masks or shields in children, 46% of children actually caused fear. 25,930 kids were polled in Germany. I tried to find a sample size that was close to y'all's. And actually, 49% of those children, when they were polled, would do not want their doctors to wear masks. 53% had headaches, 50% had concentration difficulties, 49% had joylessness, 38% had learning difficulties, 37% fatigue, and 25% had an onset and anxiety and even nightmares increased. 60% of mask wearers showed stress levels at the highest grade of a 10 scale. 60% were at 10, which is pretty sad. That would be 8,000 students or more in our district, right? Have a stress level of 10. Over 50% of mask wearers studied in that case also had an increase of depressive feelings, which I alluded to last time. Do you guys care? Just asking. Because, you know, the CDC and the WHO, the WHO actually said in August of 2020, given the limited evidence, which you authorities are supposed to decide whether or not, that the benefits of mask use in children must be weighed up against the potential harms of masks in children. You guys have epically failed in this. The effectiveness of masks in children as a vital protection is controversial, to say the least, and the lack of evidence of their widespread use in children, but no lack of evidence to their damage. Again, experts. What's the damage? Dead space volume in their lungs, breathing resistance, higher carbon dioxide levels, immune suppression, germ colonization in their mouths, which causes gum disease, increased heart rate, feeling of exhaustion, respiratory rate, difficulty breathing, shortness of breath, headaches, dizziness, heat exhaustion, drowsiness, death, actually been documented, decreased in empathy perception, increase in crime locally? Anybody? Impaired skin barrier function, acne, itching, sick building syndrome. I highly suggest you guys look that one up. Hyperventilation that triggers seizures. My brother has seizures. That's a little close to home to me. Panic attacks, catastrophic fears, and the proven masks-induced mild to moderate cognitive impairment with impaired thinking, decreased attention, verbal and nonverbal skills reduction. The facts, the use of masks should be stopped immediately. Quote, from around the world. Who on this panel has a medical degree? I want to know. Because you're practicing medicine, and I want you guys to get ready on something really super important. Because at the end of the day, it's not the government that's going to save you guys or Fauci. Because Fauci in 2020 said, "The typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective in keeping out the virus, which is small enough to pass through that material." It might, however, prove some slight benefit in keeping out gross droplets if someone coughs or sneezes on you. So you're making a decision that you guys can't even stand behind nor will your government or Fauci do it for you either. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Dooley. Kimberly is here to speak about COVID, planning time, and wages.
That's tough to follow. The tiny little bit that I want to say about masks, just teach, oh, sorry. Kimberly Dooley, 3421 Lennon Lane, Marion, have been a teacher in the Cedar Rapids School District for 21 years, 20, 21 years, at the elementary level the whole time. I think the place where you guys fell flat on the mask mandates is that we didn't start off the year using the mitigation efforts that we had available to use. The only two things legally that you guys were not able to do anything about were requiring a mask and requiring vaccinations. So we have kids in our building coming, saying, "Mom has COVID. It's good. It's just a runny nose for me. I'm fine." Their tests are going to be in the days coming. And meanwhile, there they were at school, coughing and hacking, and we're trying to get them where they need to be. My concern is that COVID or not COVID, when our kids are sick, we need to have a plan in place. When our families are sick, we need to have a plan in place. We had that plan going into last school year. We had a better plan going into last school year. Now this school year, we come and we say, for the first however many weeks, you choose what's best for your family. You choose what's best for you. And then we switch it real quick to a mask mandate. It's confusing. It makes people question the reasons justifiably, all of that. Also, just a little different perspective to put on the masks, but being an elementary school teacher, I'm sitting in close contact with my kids all day long. I actually am Title I at this point, so I've got the kids right there at the table with me, working very close proximity to me. I've had a child sneeze in my mouth before, okay? So if this keeps those droplets from hitting my face, my arm, side of my face, the time it hit me in the mouth, I'll never forget. I was teaching. It's not like I was standing there with my mouth open. So they at least help with that, I will say. We didn't have kids sick last year from things like the flu. We, we didn't have attendance issues last year with masks. And like I say, we're, I'm talking primarily about the elementary level. Okay, next thing I want to talk about is support. Teachers are not feeling supported. On school board candidate interviews that I did with our CREA, it became very apparent that the school board doesn't really know how things are going in our buildings. I would like to know, I don't know yet, what are prep times like for middle school teachers? What are prep times like for high school teachers? At the elementary level, I will tell you that we have 40 minutes per day, and twice a week, those times are taken from us to do professional learning community meetings and to co-plan weekly. Now, the video that came out at the beginning of the school year was very, I would say, misleading as far as what the district, what the district protocol is as far as how many times we are to be co-planning. And I addressed that, and I received some help from the union, but didn't really receive any feedback from Nicole. We don't have enough time to deal with the things that we are dealing with. Our kids are coming to us with greater needs than they've ever had before. Some of them taking multiple adults from other positions in to deal with one, two, three, four, five kids that are in crisis or having a moment where they just need more support. I want to, real quick, before I go, I have tons more to say. I'll be back. But I want you to think about how difficult it was for the gentleman sitting right over there to give his report and how difficult it was for all of you to sit there while parents were upset behind the speaker. He couldn't go on. Imagine what it's like for teachers who deal with those interruptions on a high-scale level every day. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kara Asmussen. Kara? Kara is here to speak about the mask mandate support.
Hello. Kara Asmussen, 2417 Second Avenue Southeast. I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School in my 23rd year, and I am not going to presume to speak for all teachers. I don't think anyone should. But I am here to voice my support for Superintendent Bush and the Board of Directors. Thank you for the mask mandate, for protecting students and staff, and for your steadfast service to the Cedar Rapids Schools.
Our next speaker is Heather Zwanziger. Heather is here to speak about the mask mandate and support of SB in a pandemic.
Hello. My name is Heather Zwanziger. I live at 7525 Normandy Drive Northeast, and I'm a 21-year teacher at Kennedy High School here in the district. I wanted to come here after watching the last meeting and last few meetings to come in person and just speak to, and give you my thanks, express my thanks to Superintendent Bush and the Board of Directors for the continuous effort to navigate the safety of students and staff in Cedar Rapids Community School District during a pandemic. And I'm a history teacher. It doesn't take a science teacher. I know pandemic is major, and it's live, and it's evolving, and it's changing. And this is a global pandemic, and information is changing all the time. And I truly feel like Cedar Rapids Community School District, on this topic, masks and safety of kids, that you have kept them first and staff. So as if supporting students and staff isn't challenging enough in a regular year and supporting people during a global pandemic, when things are changing and it's live and you're, it's life and death, really, to some people, it's major. I just wanted to thank you for a mask mandate, something that will be temporary and that we all want to come back to being normal. And I understand, and I think a lot of people understand, that this is temporary, the mask. Not easy to get through, and it's not perfect. So I want to leave you with my go-to when I've done my best, and I feel like I have done my best. One of my famous people in history is Teddy Roosevelt. I named my oldest after him. And to all of you who are in the arena, that's teachers, that's everybody, I want to read you Teddy Roosevelt's "The Man in the Arena." "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error, and shortcomings, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, and who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." And so I end with the global pandemic, doing the best you can, and I wanted to thank you for being in the arena and hearing people. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Winkowski. Lawrence is here to speak about a one-sided response.
Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Merrell Road. I'm commenting for myself and for no one else. For years, I've been advocating for change to the way the school board functions. After reading the Gazette's editorial, "One-sided Debate" published in October 3rd, I realized the editorial is in opinion. However, I don't respect opinions that spin the truth and imply alternative motives and don't provide alternative solutions. The Gettys, that editorial board has a mission statement that states, "To guide the community deliberation of public issues, motivating people to get involved in the process, and advocating for solutions." In reality, they do nothing until a hot topic arises, and then they deliberate and advocate with gasoline and matches. The editorial board works like C- The editorial board works like CNN and is dividing our community. The Gazette has done nothing to advocate for change to the democratic process within the school district. The school board is an unpaid position, so it is unfair to criticize them for not responding to every email it receives. On the other hand, the paid staff of the Gazette doesn't return any of my phone calls. The Iowa Associated School Boards provides a policy manual template that many school districts use to develop their policies. This is why policies are similar between the school districts. Most, if not all, the Cedar Rapids School District Policies Manual Series 200, Board Governance and Operations, was approved in 2018 and 2019. I do not recall the editorial board criticizing these policies when they were being approved. However, now they are an issue with, have an issue with them. The editorial board doesn't understand open meeting laws. School boards conduct a meeting in the public, not a public meeting. During a meeting in the public, the governing body does not have to let the public comment, and if they do, they cannot reply except for the reason of corrections and clarifications. Not all the school boards allow people to comment. However, several years ago, our school board increased the time limit from three to five minutes. I didn't see that mentioned in the editorial. I was offended when the editorial talked about the meeting process for gathering information as being backwards without crediting anybody for the observation. This observation was made during public comments at a couple of meetings. I also contacted the Gazette at least three times, on three, at least three occasions, requesting them to do a story to, as I believe changes to this, there are more changes that need to be made to this process. For this school board, the reason that this is the biggest issue is that 70% of this board has less than two years of service. Recently, there has been virtually no controversial issues. Since the SRO issue was a 2080 agreement, the school district didn't have to bring it to, the issue to the front of the public. However, it did in order to get feedback. Not everyone will agree with the decisions of electric, elected body. The elected body needs to be transparent in their decisions in order for the public to respect the decisions that is made. I would like to meet with board, the board, some board members and the staff as I have an idea on how to improve emails and communications on district, district topics. An idea that would make it easier for everyone. Continue trying your best and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kaylee. And Kaylee is here to speak about freedom of choice.
Hello, my name is Kaylee and from the southeast side of Cedar Rapids. I'm a junior in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of all the students who feel silenced and afraid to speak up. I used to be one of those students, but I will no longer stand by and comply with the unjust actions you as a school board and superintendent are doing. You have not given the families in this district a choice, nor do you let us speak. When you made the decision to make a mask mandate, did you even consider the students who have to obey your rules? You may claim it was to stop the spread of COVID, but I have a few things to say about that. One, masks can only be effective if someone is sick. Two, since when did the responsibility of a bunch of kids become the, since when did the, since when did it become the responsibility of a bunch of kids for the well-being of everyone? We are not stupid. We know how to wash our hands and stay home if we're sick. Wearing a mask is completely unnecessary and unethical for us. Your decisions are doing more harm than good. I ask you, the board and superintendent, to think of this the next time you make a decision, that the decisions that you make affect real people, youth and their families, not just the numbers that can make you money. I care about the education I am given and the masks that you have mandated make it difficult to get it. I've gotten a mask exemption, however, I find the fact that I need exemption to breathe absurd. Are we not taught from an early age to not put stuff over our faces? The mental and physical trauma you are causing with these masks will leave lasting effects. It is hindering our ability to properly breathe. In conclusion, I as a student feel as you do not give us enough of a voice when in reality you serve us, those you are helping give an education to, not the other way around. Our parents vote for you to represent our ideas and voices, but instead you are using your positions to further your own political agendas. I find it sad that you care more about politics than youth and parents in the district you serve in. Without us, your board is useless. All we want is freedom of choice. We want the barrier to freely make our own choices on wearing a mask or not. And we shouldn't have to get an exemption to do so. I will respect whatever choices others make on wearing a mask or not, but you are not giving any of us the ability to do that. As a student in the district, this is what I ask of the school board and superintendent that is supposed to represent me. Now instead, I have to represent myself because you have made this about politics and control instead of the good education environment we should all have. I've never been to a school board meeting before tonight, but a student in your district will no longer stand by and be silent. We will speak up for injustice, just like we were taught to. I thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Michelle Nicholas. Michelle's here to speak about health and mask mandate.
Thank you. A little bit hard to follow up from that. My name is Michelle Nicholas. I live at 3003 30th Street Drive, Southeast Cedar Rapids. I am a mother to two students in the Cedar Rapids School District. And I would like to ask you guys a few questions about them. Do you know their full names? Do you know their birthdays? Do you know which, if any, health conditions that they have? Do you know which, if any, medications they take and what the proper dosage is for each of them? Do you know which, if any, foods they are allergic to? I would guess your answers to all of these questions would be no. Do you know who could answer all of these? My husband and me. We are the ones who are responsible for them, responsible for their well-being and responsible for their healthcare. It is not a job that we take lightly. You all know nothing about them nor their health history, but yet you are making decisions about their health. Why? I utilize the school district for help in educating my kids, not to provide them healthcare. We need to stop taking this one-size-fits-all approach. There is no one-size-fits-all in educating our kids. Each child has a different style of learning to best fit their needs, such as visual, social, verbal, logical, and several more. Why are we taking a one-size-fits-all approach of their health by mandating masks for everyone? According to the FDA, and this is straight from the FDA's website, the FDA regulates face masks, including cloth face coverings, barrier face coverings, and surgical masks as medical devices when they are intended for a medical purpose. Medical purposes include uses related to helping prevent the spread of COVID-19. So I'm requesting a Freedom of Information Act, requesting a written answer to this following question in the next five days. Who gives you the authority to mandate a medical device to be worn? Per Iowa Code 147.2, a person shall not engage in the practice of medicine and surgery without a license for that purpose. The definition of practice of medicine, according to the Iowa Code 653-1.1, shall mean holding oneself out as being able to diagnose, treat, operate, or prescribe for any human disease, pain, injury, and so on. So again, I ask, who gives you the authority to mandate a medical device to be worn? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Bushman. Dan is here to talk about masks.
Hi, I'm Dan Bushman, 3744 Rogers Road Northwest. I guess there's a couple of things I want to talk to you guys about. One, thanks for doing the job you're doing. Everybody's looking at you here and it seems some people are coming at you and that's not a line, that's a desk. You're on our side too, I feel. One thing I wanted to address is the SRO issue. I know it's kind of, you guys are figuring some stuff out there. A lot of people hear about the bad things that happen with SROs and I was a member of law enforcement for a few years in my life in Lynn County and, and they're great people and nobody ever talks about all the high fives or the times when they're, when people are crying and they're, you know, going to charity council about problems they're having at home or problems that they're having at school or bad things that they see that a teacher doesn't need to hear about. That's a law enforcement issue. So I think SROs are extremely important. And, and one thing that I did, that was my favorite thing to do in law enforcement, was McGruff. And, you know, whether you were with McGruff or wearing the costume and you were getting out on your knee and giving high fives to kids, stuff like that. The most important thing we can do right now is let our kids experience law enforcement at a young age. So they know that they can talk to them. They know that they care about them. They know that, you know, 99.99% of them are just good people doing their jobs and they're here to serve, just like you're serving today. And, you know, a lot of these kids were, you know, they loved McGruff but were afraid of me in a uniform. And that was just crazy. And I, I mean, I saw it firsthand and I know you probably haven't had that experience. I just want to relate that to you. That is extremely important. I mean, middle schoolers, 100%, even, even young kids, I mean, how are we gonna, who's gonna be a cop if nobody likes cops? You know, and if you don't know whether to like them or not, except for the person that's telling you, hey, I don't like that guy, he's a cop. You know, because you don't have any personal experience with them, you know? So it's a huge deal, I think, to consider, you know, increasing that interaction. And it is, it's more interaction than anything, you know, I think. I mean, yes, they're there 10% probably to protect the kids and correct issues, but there's 90% interaction that nobody hears about. It's only the bad things that make the paper and, and we have a serious issue with our paper here that we've all heard about. So another thing I'd like to talk about is, the main thing is I own a business in Cedar Rapids and I and my friends, we are the doer of deeds. We are in the arena. We have worn a lot of hats and we, I've worn a lot of masks. And I will tell you, the ones that a lot of you are wearing are, is not a mask that's going to defend you against the greatest, most dangerous virus ever created. I've worn a lot of masks and at the end of the day, when you pull the mask off, my face is just white from dust and different things, you know, particulate that we've received. A virus is like five microns of holes in your mask or 20. Yes, it's gonna, it's gonna protect you from macro droplets and maybe, you know, it's gonna limit dispersion to a smaller radius. But when you're right on top of kids and everything else, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily doing anything. I think it's harming kids in the fact that, especially our, our youngest, because they can't see the teacher's mouth. They don't know how to, how to enunciate. They don't know how to form the words. They don't know how to use their mouth. The other thing is, is we're missing smiles. I mean, these kids, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot of, they go to school and they feel sad, you know? A week ago, a grandma was telling me about their granddaughter told her that me and, me and my friend Ally, we snuck off to the side of the, of the playground and we pulled our masks down to show each other our faces real quick when nobody was looking. And then we put our masks back up because we just wanted to see each other's faces. And there was, there's no social interaction. There's no, how do you communicate happiness? I mean, body language is 90% of it and facial expression is probably 75% of that. So I, I think we're doing some real damage here. And nobody, everybody's talking about, you know, the pandemic, the virus, all that. And, and the information just keeps changing. So when you have people that are free thinkers like me and problem solvers like me, I, I look at facts and data and I look at how things go from this side to that side. And then you, you have, you know, different countries getting, you know, stopping vaccinations and stopping different things. The information is consistently changing. But here at a local level, especially in Iowa, I, I think that we can think for ourselves. And, and that is one thing that your product that you're producing is missing. I'm trying to hire people. All my friends are trying to hire people and we cannot get free thinkers. We cannot get problem solvers. They're in their phones. They can't communicate. And, and all the masks are going to do is just make communication worse, make, make anxiety higher. And one thing too, when you're in the classroom, if anxiety or emotion goes up, IQ goes down. So if you think you're gonna have a hard time getting students to pick up what you're putting down, you put a mask on, raise the anxiety level, the bandwidth that they have to learn shrinks. So you're working in the, in the opposite direction of what you want to do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Stahl, I believe is how I say your name.
Hi, I'm Angie Stahl. I live at 3744 Rogers Road. I came tonight with an agenda as far as, you know, finding out what's going on behind closed doors or behind computers and stuff like that, like where you guys are getting your information. And we have legal access to that, you know? I'll give you 20 days for it. I'll email everybody what I want and what the community needs from you guys, okay? I just, do you care about our kids? That's number one. Do you care about what is happening to our society? And yes, COVID is real. COVID is here. We will never be zero. So I don't know. It, it would be nice if you guys had a plan of where the numbers need to be because the numbers are really low and the death rates are really low and people do die. I'm not getting out of here alive. I don't know about any of you guys. You're not living forever. I'm not saying go out and sneeze on somebody. But let's use our heads. We're ruining our society. We're ruining our kids. We don't stop working. We got paras out there getting beat up. They are the lowest paid. Give them a little bit of something, something. I love volunteering at the schools. I can be somebody that can pull a kid to at least hold them and hug them while they're having a fit and save that teacher. Because I don't care. I care about the kids. I can't volunteer. Why are we locking the schools down? Kids are out at restaurants. I bet every single one of you have been at a restaurant. You wore your mask in there and you sat down, you took it off, put, put the tables down, put the tables in the classrooms so the kids can walk in with their masks and then take their masks off, just like restaurants, right? I mean, come on. Where does this make sense? Let's get back to training, not training, teaching these kids, teaching them. They just want information. They don't care about COVID. They don't care about this stuff. They just want to see their friends. They want to be social, as we do too. It's killing us. It's killing us. And, and the three people that I have known have killed themselves in the last year. I don't know anybody that's died of COVID and I'm sorry. I've known people that have died of pneumonia and they wanted to call it COVID. And that's a bunch of crap, because I worked in hospitals too. Let's get back to being real. Let's get back to getting these kids where they need to be. We want to, I want to come in and volunteer. I want to help these teachers. It's not their fault. It's not your guys' fault. I know it's all about, you know, whatever you guys are being told. And, and a lot of the stuff is, is we're getting rumors and stuff like that. You're getting paid. Is money really that important? I mean, I'll give you my paycheck if you want. I don't care. I want good working, good people. I mean, we, we, we go, we go places. There's no help anywhere. What are we doing to these kids? They're living in fear. Get them out there. Have some kind of pride. Let's show them that they can have some pride. I just, you know, it's hard being up there for you guys. I know. I can imagine. And I don't, and I don't want to be that parent that's coming here to just complain. But have some strategies in place. What about some, some of these social things, you know? I see that the schools are taking out of the parties for the Halloween and the Valentines. Why? Why? We, we go to the Iowa games? They were full. We were packed, shoulder to shoulder. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Have any of you guys gone to any of the football games? Are you gonna go to basketball games? Are we gonna close those because they're indoors? I mean, come on. Viruses are never gonna go away. They just aren't. But we can make things better for our kids. So we need to start thinking about what we can do for our kids as far as social stuff and what they can do with the staff too. They are hating their teachers because their teachers all day, it's put your mask on, put your mask on, put your mask on, put your mask on. When, since when, you know, why is it that they can't have any fun? I mean, let's start thinking about, let's brainstorm and think about things that we can do so that these kids can get back to happy. You know, at least something. So, thank you, guys.
Our next speaker is Julie Casey. Julie's here to speak about a tough subject.
Hello, my name is Julie Casey. I'm from 5235 Winnebago Avenue. I addressed this board before thinking that just hearing you guys so much talk about misinformation from the CDC with the CDC's own website can be- from the CDC, with the CDC's own website can be used to disprove their own information like masks. And I'm not gonna go on the information, we've had ladies do it far better. I've been researching for ten years on this information. And, you know, mostly about fraud. I was an EMT last year licensed. I know how important air is. It is so vital that you don't go below ninety-seven. But I know the masks are doing that. I was with a mask for twenty minutes. I had ninety-five. That's where we give oxygen. So I'm not gonna go into all the, the facts, I don't think it matters here. Because something I found out was so, so disturbing to me that I, I am not gonna teach. What I'm gonna do is just address what I found. First of all, I started this whole thing because of Eyes Open Iowa. I don't know if you guys know what that is. It's in Iowa. And it's the new sex education. This new sex education is porn. And I am so disturbed, I started going to school board meetings. I have a group that I am with and we're thinking about joining another group. This is so disturbing. And it's going across America. And what they're teaching, and I don't know if it's here, we're looking for that, what they're teaching is masturbation and anal sex for kindergartners. That's not acceptable. And I hope it's not gonna ever be in this school, because at that point, we'll need a judge to intervene. And I'm not accusing at this point, but it's in Iowa. And they have educators teaching educators how to get around parents, which is disturbing. My granddaughter, by the way, just for the masks, finally had to get an exemption because she was sick so much. She's coughing in the morning, coughing at night, sick all day long, runny nose, goes from different sicknesses to different, I'm tired of it. We all know the fact, you guys know that it doesn't work. I mean, it's so viral at this point, the corruption. The WHO just announced that the PCR test is fake and it's a code two violation. That's serious. And yet, we're gonna go ahead and use a code two violation PCR test because they haven't got the new one out yet and we're still using that data. I mean, the data means nothing. It's from an agency that's corrupted. And by the way, thank you for giving me time on the phone with you, that was wonderful. And I do appreciate it. And I know you guys are trying to do your job, but we're here fighting for our kids. And I will fight for my child. I'm not gonna watch her be sick all the time because you guys want a mask mandate. And what I found out that was so disturbing is money was given, I FOIA'd it. Five, seven-hundred-and-seventy-three million dollars for Iowa to get money for COVID from the CDC. I know every school board got that money. I don't know the percentage, but I know they got it. So I want to know who pocketed the money. I want to know exactly where that money was spent. Is it to, because here it is. If you're a hundred percent compliant with masks and vaccines, you get the funding. So that has nothing to do with our children, it has everything to do with funding. You're getting money for it. I don't want money to be involved in my kids' education at all. And what I'm really concerned with is the hundred percent that the kids have to have masks on and vaccines. And I listened to two school board members here, if not three, pushing and pushing and pushing, how can we get around the law? How can we make these mask mandates? Is there any way we can do this? Is, are you sure there's no way we can do this? How do we do this? And then I listened to him say, we need the addresses of the kids and the parents that don't want to vaccinate. You wanted our addresses? Why? Why did you want our addresses? Is it because you were gonna get funding? That's illegal to take our addresses and our information. But I live at five-two-three-five Winnebago Avenue, in case you want to know. There's my address. I will not vaccinate. And I want to know, I want to know who is giving the money to who. I mean, not who the money is to, but who the addresses we're gonna go to. Were you gonna give it to an agency that was gonna separate us from our children? Because they're doing it in Australia. And they're doing it in Canada next month. They will give them health camps, health camps for parents and children. You know what that means? It's not a health camp. This is what happened in Nazi Germany. For their, it's for their good, of course. It's for your good. Isn't that what we get told? It's for our good. It's not for our good. So I don't want the sex education taught, I don't want the CRT taught, and I don't want masks on my kids' faces. And I certainly don't want school board members being paid. And I want to know if you guys got kid masks.
Backfond, I, I appreciate that, but could you refrain from the outbursts we'd like to, to get through and to respect our other speakers, please?
Our next speaker is Casey Anderson and she's here to speak about parent choice.
Hi, my name is Casey Anderson. I live at twenty-five forty-one B Avenue Northeast and I am a parent of a student as well as a teacher in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. My goal for students is to offer the supports needed in order to develop into well-rounded, kind individuals who contribute positively to the world in which we live. Becoming an independent learner through student-centered learning is only part of the equation. The other part is incorporating critical thinking skills into learning. Critical thinking is not possible without questioning. For critical thinking to be effective, one must learn to not blindly believe the claims made about the world around us, no matter who the information is delivered by. But instead, ask the hard questions, look for evidence, analyze and evaluate the information, and then come to a conclusion. Critical thinking is the intellectual basis of the scientific method. The phrase "I believe in science" may be one of the most absurd things a person can say in this age of information. What this statement has come to mean is, "I believe in the current scientific consensus," or "I trust the scientific results in the study posted right below." It also implies that anyone who disagrees with me is anti-science and I have no reason to listen to them. Unless science is your religion, science is not meant to be a belief system. Science is meant to be a process. The minute you believe in science is the minute you give away your critical thinking skills, because the study tells you what to think. True scientists do not believe in scientific results so much as they believe in the process. They have the understanding that science is always changing. We will never arrive to a place and time where we know all there is to know. Science is meant to be questioned, not blindly believed in. In the words of Richard Feynman, "I'd rather have questions that can't be answered than answers that can't be questioned." The final issue I have with this statement is that most science has been bought by our capitalistic and reductionist culture. We only study the things that can make us money and only those with money can fund the science that they believe. For instance, we study what a drug or supplement does to one part of the body without looking at how it affects the whole person long-term. Regarding the information shared by other community members this evening, I would encourage you to keep an open mind and remember that we cannot make any scientific progress if we do not allow ourselves to explore new ideas. Not to mention, we cannot make progress as a society if we are constantly divided because of blindly judging others based on personal bias. Speaking of personal bias, I would like to pivot now to address the bias the district leadership has demonstrated. To be clear, I am not and have never have been a supporter of identity politics. I value freedom, I value personal responsibility, and I value community. And I would like to address the reinstatement of a mask mandate for all staff, students, and visitors regarding said values. House File eight-four-seven started with grassroots, with actual citizens of Iowa using the proper channels in government in order for a bill to be created, passed, and signed into law. That is how legislation works and is a great example of our government doing its job, working for the people, deriving its power from we, the people. The response to take away a parent's God-given right to weigh the data and make the decision that best suits the needs of their family, guaranteed by House File eight-four-seven, suggests district leadership does not value the beliefs of students and their families who use the proper channels of government in the first place to advocate for this bill being passed. Furthermore, it seems to convey the message that the district leadership believes families are not only incapable of making such decisions, but also do not merit the freedom to do so. It's insulting and degrading. Administrators, staff, board members, teachers, and unelected health officials of the school district are a subordinate entity to parents. On this, there is no compromise. The only mandate given to schools in America is to teach children to increase their learning and skills for them to compete with excellence on the global stage. The true core values critical to America's history of exceptionalism include individual rights, not collective rights, and public, not government-controlled, education. I stand alongside all parents who exercise their God-given and constitutionally guaranteed rights of free speech and legal right to address any school board concerning their child's education. I support choice, I support informed consent, I believe in a parent's God-given right to gather and weigh the data and make the decision that best suits the needs of their family. Ultimately, this is about the civil, about civil liberties, regardless of where you stand on masking, I support your choice to wear a mask or to not wear a mask. It is our job as educators to advocate for all children and families in our district, regardless of their family's political ideology or beliefs, religious or otherwise. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carter Kramer. He's here to speak about mask mandates.
My name's Carter Kramer, I live at seventy-five oh-five Blair's Ferry Road in Cedar Rapids. I have two children in the Cedar Rapids School District. Just by show of hands, how many people on the school board have children in this school district? So, three? I'm gonna talk a little bit about a few things everybody touched on, but I want to talk more about the social aspect of school and how important it was for me personally. I currently own a company in Cedar Rapids, I employ over a hundred people. I brought over a hundred million dollars of interstate commerce into the city of Cedar Rapids in my time of owning my business. On multiple occasions, I heard people talking about peripet. I've approached the Cedar Rapids School District about making large donations to the school, at which I was told that that was not gonna be something that the school was interested in because of fear of losing state subsidy money. So I think that's important for everybody to know. Also, I see all you guys have masks on today, but I have a picture here of the school board meeting on June fourteenth where not a single person in this room was wearing a mask. It was less than a hundred and twenty days ago. I think that's also important to, to note. The reason I want to talk about the social aspect is that I went to school at the University of Iowa and majored in biology. I didn't graduate and I went to, into another field of business. It was due to my social skills, my ability to communicate, that has created a large amount of success for me and the hundred and ten people that I employ. What these people are talking about with the lack of social connectivity with these children in school is real. It's very real. As a child with ADHD myself, there's no way that I could learn from a teacher with a mask. Zero percent chance. It is really infuriating that you guys don't understand that all these people sitting here without masks on are here because we get to hear the emotional distraught that comes home from these children from school. And all of you guys that don't have kids in school don't have to worry about it. It's a little bit unfair. I think it's very important that we remember why we're here and why these schools are in place. It is not about your political stance. It is about these kids and them growing up to be successful human beings. Somebody just said it, right? We want these kids, the teacher, where's she at? Right there. Wonderful. We want these kids, you guys, Iowa has one of the best reputations of any state in the Union to produce children that have great communication skills that are very successful out in the world that we live in. We don't live in some crazy biased state. It's a very open-minded place, one of the, one of the first states to legalize gay marriage, one of the first states to, to go through and, and still we have this very right and left. So that's great, you guys, that's a great experience for our children to grow up in, right? We have both sides of the spectrum here in the state that we live in. That's diversity, that's a good thing, right? I think we all agree on that. I'm not very good at science, but I'm pretty good at math, so I wanted to bring a couple of numbers, because I think numbers in this situation are a lot more important than theories, right? Which is science. It's all based on theories. Here's a couple of numbers. Melissa mentioned that three children in the state of Iowa died of COVID, that is correct. A total of four-hundred-and-ninety-nine children in the United States of America between the ages zero and seventeen have died from COVID nineteen. That's including the numbers that are being financially incentivized for hospitals to claim COVID as a death. There's a total number of seventy-three million children, roughly, age zero to seventeen in the United States. That means point zero-zero-zero-zero-six-eight percent are at risk of dying from COVID. Also, the chances of having hospitalization from COVID in a child the age of zero to seventeen is one in two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. That's hospitalization, not death. There's seventeen thousand kids in our school district, roughly. Any of you guys know math? Let's do some math on that. That means there's about a zero percent chance one of these kids is gonna die. Our body is made to go through and increase our immune system based on the infections that we come in contact with. That's what we're about. I have not heard one person on this school district talk about more sleep, or drinking more water, or taking a multivitamin, or getting more exercise. That is taking care of your immune system and that is how we keep ourselves healthy. We're talking about masks and we're talking about vaccines and we're talking about all these man-made items. Guess what, guys? That's about money. That's about money, not about health. So I hope that some of you guys get yourself out of this political sideshow and start to understand that this is about children and about real health and it's about experience. I've traveled around this entire country, the entire time through COVID, I connected five-hundred-thousand people to fiber connectivity that wouldn't have it so they could go to school from home and work from home. What if I was so scared about the point-two-percent chance that I could die from COVID that I didn't do that job? What happens to other ninety-eight, ninety-nine point eight percent of people? They don't go to school? You guys, we have to look at the numbers and use common sense. I ask you guys to do that. These people wouldn't all be here if they weren't concerned about these children coming home and what they're saying when they get there. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Diana Lord. Diana's here to speak about mask mandates and comments made at the last board meeting.
I wanted to address a few things that I've heard some people say. I heard someone say that their kids come home crying every night because they have to wear masks at recess, but actually, kids don't have to wear masks at recess when they're playing outside. There are quite a few times during the day that they do get to have breaks from their masks when they're socially distanced. And I have been, oh, I should have said, I'm sorry, my name is Diana Lord and I live at twenty-six ninety seventeenth Avenue in Marion. I'm a media specialist at three different elementary schools in Cedar Rapids District and I have been teaching for sixteen years. And I have been teaching at the elementary school level since before the pandemic began. And I've seen, I've seen it come through and I've seen what it's done. And I've never had a child say that they couldn't breathe with their mask on. And the people that I actually see who have the biggest problem with it seem to be adults more than kids. Kids are really adaptable to these situations. I also want to say thank you to the board for taking the advice of medical and scientific experts, which have told us that the, the best options that we have right now to stop the spread is through wearing masks. And it's also temporary. As a media specialist, I take the spread of misinformation very seriously. It's my job to help kids know how to distinguish facts from fiction when they're doing research online. It's actually one of the most important things that I do because misinformation is just so rampant right now and it's costing people their lives. I also just want to say that the wearing of the masks is temporary and it's, and it's, it's, it's one of the least restrictive things that could happen. And I'm afraid that if we don't have the masks on, that it's going to spread to the point where we can't be in school anymore. So thank you for helping us stay in school, because that is the best way for kids to learn, being in school. I also appreciate the fact that you're helping keep the thousands of people who are employed and their families by the Cedar Rapids School District and their children and their friends safe as well, because we know that they're risking their own lives just by going to work every day. But they're all doing it, because there's not an educator out there that isn't doing this. They're doing it for the kids and because they love their work. And I know, I understand that there are concerns about the fact that this hasn't been normal. Pandemics aren't normal. There's not much we can do about that. The only thing that we can do is protect ourselves and do the best that we can and remember that this won't last forever. And there's so much more, I mean, there, it's not that, there's so much more to communication. Anyone who has seen my facial expressions during this whole time can tell that you can still communicate with a mask on. And there's playing, there's reading, there's talking, there's eating together. These things are still taking place. And there's still adults that are working really hard to make sure that the kids are doing well and thriving in school as best that they can. Also, the school board does not get paid. Thank you for your service, I appreciate it.
That concludes our speakers for this evening.
And thank you. And that ends all our public comments that we received by the deadline this evening. And next, we'll move on tonight to a public hearing for instructional time reporting and hours versus days for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Board Secretary Day, have we received- Board Secretary Day, have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearing on tonight's agenda?
We have not received any comments written with regards to instructional time reporting and hours versus days.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding our published hearing?
We do not. Thank you.
With that, the public hearing is now officially closed. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to pull for comment, question, or separate Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
A second.
This is a roll call.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Reese Singer.
Aye.
Director Marsh Brock.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Tominski. President Humble.
Aye. Next, we'll move to learning and leadership. On our agenda is Superintendent Bush and Deputy Superintendent Quaker and Executive Director Rice will provide an overview on the district's new website and the spring 2021 ISAB results. So I'll turn it over.
Thank you to all of you.
Very much. Excuse me, we need to leave the doors open.
So the doors must be left open for an open meeting? Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about student learning tonight. We are going to review our ISAS results, and we thought that we might give everyone an opportunity to see where things exist on our website tonight. Hopefully, that, this is an opportunity for us to give a continued overview of the new website, but also how folks can access information. So thank you to Mr. Schaefer for driving our website tonight. So just for the board's purposes and our community's purposes, our strategic plan and the ways in which we measure our progress is under the section "About" on our new website. And then you'll see very clearly in the About section, the strategic plan. And so just if you want to scroll down a little bit, just a little overview here, our strategic plan has four major focus areas. So if you look at the left-hand bar, sorry, the sidebar here, you can see our four major focus areas. And if you were to click on any of those, you would be able to unpack each one of those focus areas. If you scroll back to the top of the page here, you'll see that everything we do, of course, is anchored in our vision and our mission and also our belief statements. So tonight, we get to zoom in on one of those, well, really, it's all of our beliefs. We're really zooming in on our student learning. As was adopted by the board and that we continue to assess is our system indicators. And our system indicators are all about student performance. So we have an equity system indicator, a proficiency system indicator, and our graduation rate system indicator. The first of those two system indicators, equity and proficiency, is aligned to our assessments. Tonight, we're going to unpack the ISAS assessments, and Deputy Superintendent Quaker and Executive Director Rice are going to provide you an overview of the results we received from the spring assessment, but also a little historical context. But I think it's always important that this, our board adopted strategic plan, we anchor ourselves in this and remind ourselves of what the work is that we're continuing to get after, why we've set these goals, and how we're supporting our kids. So if you see the system indicator of equity, our system indicators articulated at the top, but also we've unpacked subgroups that have not been performing, we've had uneven performance as a district. So what are our goals in those areas, and then how are we continuing to support our students to perform at high levels? So without any further ado, that's all for the website overview. You can unpack that even more if you'd like on your own. I'd like to hand it over to Executive Director Rice to start with our ISAS overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bush, and good evening. We're going to focus on three things as we look at ISAS results tonight. One, I want to give you a brief overview of the state and Cedar Rapids on spring of 2021 assessment results. Two, briefly want to show how Cedar Rapids is performing relative to the goals that Superintendent Bush just mentioned. And then third, what some of our next steps are. There's a lot of information in these slides. We're not going to look at each and every slide in depth unless you'd like to. Instead, I've chosen a few key select ones that I think are particularly valuable for us to look at as we go. So as Superintendent mentioned, this is our student learning focus area. And you may be asking, what does ISAS stand for? What does that mean? It's the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress. It's done every spring, and it's a summative measure of math, reading, and science in grades three through 11. So this is the main way the state, the federal government, and here in the district, we measure our progress and how our students are achieving. So briefly, for statewide trends, compared to the 2019 test, we don't have a 2020 test due to cancellation from COVID. Iowa's reading results really varied across grade levels. Some grade levels went up, some grade levels went down, kind of uneven. In terms of third grade, they had the largest drop in the state, 14.8 percentage points. So 14.8% fewer students were proficient than in 2019. I think it's pretty obvious why that's the case. These were students most impacted at the early grade levels by COVID that occurred in 2019, 2020, 2021. So those students really struggled across the state. In terms of math performance, every single grade level in Iowa dropped. So there was a pretty significant challenge in how students performed statewide. In Cedar Rapids, we saw very similar things. We saw drops in achievement in reading and math, similar to the state. And our most significant declines areas were third grade reading, again, similar to the state, but also in ninth grade math. Those two areas were where students struggled the most in this past spring. So some contributing factors, why might that be the case? One, I mentioned straight away, loss of instructional time due to COVID, and the Augustorecha. If you remember, about a year ago, we started school quite late in the year, lost about 10% of our school year. So 10% fewer days of instruction certainly impacted the students, so they lost time. And obviously, due to COVID, there was certainly shifts and changes, again, here locally, here across the state, and nationally. We also switched to the online version of the ISAS. The state has been moving. We were one of the later districts to adopt the online version. Online version has lots of benefits, but almost every district that's taken an online test compared to a paper-to-pencil test did see a dip that first year, as partly how students navigate different technology, navigate the questions a little bit differently. That's a pretty common first-year dip in terms of adopting a new test. And then third, adapting instruction in the remote environment last year was certainly new for our staff. We certainly did our level best, but know that that was a factor in our scores. So how do our scores relate to the academic goals that we have in our system and our system indicators? First and foremost, we have a goal around student growth. That's not on the system indicators because for growth, you need one very important thing. You need a previous year and a current year. And we didn't have a test in the 2019, we had, 2019 was our first year of the new test. 2020, we didn't take the test, so we couldn't see growth. And then in 2021, we weren't able to compare to 2020, so we didn't have that growth measure. So this is a really, really important and valuable growth measure, how each of our students are growing, but one we don't have right now. A year from now, we will have this, should have this available, but right now, don't have this one. Second goal is around proficiency. Again, our goal is at least 80% of our students scoring proficient or advanced in reading, math, and science. And on that goal, you can see here on the slide where we are, again, relative to the state. Typically, we are much higher, near 70% in each of these categories, but again, saw a significant drop this past spring due to some of the factors I mentioned before. And again, consistent with the state as a drop as well. So these are our proficiency rates. You know that our goal for 2022 is to have at least 80%, so there is some significant ground to make up. This term, as you probably heard, is learning loss, and so we want to be able to address these achievement gaps as quickly as possible. I also wanted to mention how our in-person students fared compared to our remote students. So I just briefly put a slide up here. You can see that our students who were learning remotely did fare slightly worse than our students in person, again, for a variety of reasons. I'm going to skip through quickly these next slides, but they just break out performance by various levels, if that's of value. Certainly able to talk about those later. A third goal we have is around advanced students. We want to make sure that twice as many of our students are scoring advanced on the ISAS compared to when we started this in 2019. So I listed here the end sizes of how many students we had at advanced in the 18, 19 school year in that first column, and how many we had advanced this past spring. So you can see there's a bit of a drop there in the number of students who are performing at the advanced category, and we're aiming to significantly up those numbers this spring on our assessment results. This is important because we don't want our results only to focus on students at the lower end of the achievement level, but also students at the higher end as well. We want each of our students to show growth, depending on where they are academically. Finally, this is one of the more tricky goals to explain, so I'm going to use a few hand motions, if that's okay. But we want to decrease the gaps in proficiency rates in three categories, by race, English learner status, and IEP status by 20 points, 20%, not 20 points. So how you do that is you have to measure what the gap is, and then you have to measure how you can decrease that gap in performance between those groups. So how we got this goal is we measured the gap between student performance in two of these categories, and then determined what would be a 20% reduction of that gap. And if we can reduce that number by 20% each year even, we're going to get closer and closer to reducing the gap overall. So these charts are meant to show you, the first two, what the performance proficiency rate is between white students and African-American students, therefore what the gap is, so the gap in the reading category, English, language arts, would be 38 percentage points. And if we reduced that gap by 20%, the gap in performance between white and African-American students would be 30% rather than 38%. So the goal is each year to reduce the gap in performance between different groups of students. And so you can see what that goal is, what the performance was this past spring, and on the next slide, you can see how that changed since 2019. So between white and black students, we did see a slight increase of the gap rather than a reduction in reading and science, and no change in math. As it relates to English learners and non-English learners, you can see the similar results there, or sorry, similar descriptive data about where the gaps are. These gaps are a little bit larger than the previous one I showed. And compared to previous years, we've shrunk the gap in reading, six percentage points. It's increased in math, and then it's shrunk as well in science. So there is some change there. Final category we have is students with IEPs and students without IEPs. Again, you can see we have some sizable gaps in between these two groups of students, which is why this is a focus area, and the gap changed there. In each group, reading, math, and science, the gap between those student groups has shrunk slightly. So something we're continuing to aim to do each year as a focus. Third, and finally, some next steps. So how are we addressing these gaps? What are our plans for the year? There are four I wanted to mention, and certainly open it to Deputy Superintendent Quaker if you'd like to expand on them. But first is an increased focus on our professional learning communities. This is how our teachers plan together and use their collective teacher efficacy to better support our students, working as a team. Second is our family engagement work, connecting families and making sure that the schools and our families are partners in the educational journey for our students, working hand-in-hand for our students' benefits. Third, an increased focus on instructional coaching, supporting our teachers instructionally to meet the needs of all the students in their classes. And then finally, some focus on assessment for learning, making sure we have good assessments that, I think as Kelly McMahon mentioned, don't feel like they're paper pencil tests but feel like they're an authentic performance that are part for the students, and so there's really a blur between instruction and assessment. We can get good data for our staff and students and assist students in their learning along the way. So I gave you the lightning round version, knowing you've been in your seats for a bit tonight. I hope that was okay, but happy to take any questions and concerns, comments, if you'd like.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you for providing us with this information. And I noticed on one of the slides, have you guys figured out, you said for third grade, there was a drop? Is that statewide? Is, and do we know what has caused that? I know, I know we had remote and how we switch, but my question's kind of twofold. How are we going? We're going to have to make some major improvements to get everybody up to speed, and I guess that's kind of my question. The gap, when I look at some of our groups, the gap is really wide, and I know we have, with our strategic plan, set a plan in place, but what programs do we have in place right now to help, to assist us with closing that gap?
Excellent question. So the third grade reading gap in particular is both a statewide and a local drop. Our drops were similar. The students who took the ISAS as third graders in the spring were second graders, sorry, were third graders during last year, and they were second graders the year before, and they missed a lot of that foundational literacy instruction when we had to close, as all schools did in March of 2020. And so K through 2, you're really learning the foundational reading skills that you need to then accelerate your learning. You go from learning to read to reading to learn, and those students just lost time that their peers in previous years would have had. And so to address that, we've got a number of things on the table. One, we've changed some of our literacy instruction. We've worked with our elementary building principals and Director Christensen at length on what the best literacy practices are. We call them the building blocks for literacy, and have trained principals on some of the most important things that are going to be impactful for great tier-one instruction that all students are getting. We've put in place some class-wide interventions. We have a new digital platform called iReady that's providing three-time-a-year benchmark assessments that's at a more detailed level on reading comprehension in addition to the FAST assessment. So literacy at the elementary level is a huge focus, a huge intensive thing. There's probably 10 more things I could mention on the topic, but a huge, huge area of focus to bring students up, because if we don't address the foundational literacy, that puts students really at a disadvantage for the rest of their academic career. Hope that answers your question, President Humble.
Other questions from the board?
I have a couple. It hasn't been that long since I've had students in third grade. Doesn't feel like that long, in a way. So two questions there. To my recollection, third grade is the first time that any assessment test is given, correct? Right. So when we're saying that third grade has decreased in test scores, we're comparing them to the standard of the previous year, I'm assuming.
So I was comparing Cedar Rapids' third graders in 2021 compared to Cedar Rapids' third graders in 2019. So yes, not the same students, yes. So Cedar Rapids' students in 2021 were, on average, 15% lower than their peers.
Gotcha. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify.
Pardon me, yes.
Also, you know, the third grade indicator has been used nationwide in education to be indicators of further academic success. I'm wondering if there's any adjustments that have been made, both within our district and nationally on the education level, that are kind of taking that third grade assessment into consideration and why it's going to be different because of contributing factors, and kind of adjusted what that projection looks like?
That's an excellent question. I wanted to mention, the first part of your question was, do we assess students prior to third grade? And we do with the FAST assessment, which we give three times a year, just to be able to progress monitor students prior to them getting to the third grade assessment. So there is some of that we have historically, and we've seen similar decreases in 2019 students compared to 2021 students at the K and first level as well. So we know that those students have really been impacted by COVID and the instruction there. One of our assessment vendors that we use in both elementary and middle school is called iReady, and iReady has changed some of their reporting results to say, here's what historically results would be like at third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Here's what they are nationally right now, given changes that we've seen. And so we do compare in both of those categories to have a better sense of what should we expect out of students this year versus what would we have expected if there had been no pandemic? So that has been certainly something to help us look at.
Right. So, and I mean, I think that, you know, Director Newman has said before, this is going to be something they'll write papers and abstracts and books for, for years and years to come. So I guess, obviously, there's foundational pieces that are being missed at the elementary level. So I, again, I just want to put in perspective that we're not alone in this. It's the state, it's the nation, it's all of education, it's the world. So while the measures don't look fantastic, I think that they're very reflective of the environment we're living in.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I had a couple of questions about your, the results by mode.
Sure.
The in-person versus remote. Can you talk to us a little bit about how you defined that? Just because we had such a crazy year last year with some schools going back, some not, optional students, you know, they were in-person but sitting on their couch, at least in my house. So I'm just curious how that was defined.
Sure. So in our data tool, we took from Infinite Campus any time a student had been moved to an online environment and marked those students with a notifier. And so I compared all the students who had not gone into an online environment at any point, so they were the in-person category, and the remote category was any student who was remote at some point in the year. Could have been three weeks, could have been the entire semester, so I know- So I know that it's not exactly, every remote student isn't exactly the same, but that was the comparison point.
So essentially, all the high school students would be considered remote then since they were at home?
That's an excellent question. No, that would be, sorry, if that, if their entire school was remote, we didn't consider them that. We're talking about individual students on a one-off basis that they moved into a remote environment unique. So they went to the Cedar Rapids Virtual Academy or they, through parental choice, moved for a short time, could have been a couple of weeks or a month.
Okay.
Not whole school. Thank you.
Okay. Then I, that would suggest to me that I don't know how much worthwhile is really in this data because it was just such a messy year. I'm not sure. So I'll stop asking questions.
No, I would concur. We wanted to be able to approximate a measure in case there was a widely variant data. I think these numbers surprised us in how small the difference was. And again, admittedly, questions on the end size and who counts for what.
Thank you.
Fair enough, yeah.
The N we might be able to better reflect is our elementary environment.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah. Minus the two and a half week period there before the holidays where everybody was remote. But that would probably be the truest measure is those who were absolutely. And there are three middle schools that had that in-person option right from the get-go. Yeah.
I hope we get more detailed questions about end sizes and identifiers. It's very exciting.
I'm not the person to ask those questions. Within this, a couple of questions. Did we measure it all by socioeconomic data, just students who are on free and reduced lunch as well? And did we see significant gaps in that?
We do measure by that and we do have that internally. One of the reasons we don't make that a system indicator is because these other categories are things that teachers can have access to to make instructional and intentional changes in their classroom. But we don't make it a practice to give free, reduced status to teachers and say, this student versus this student is on free and reduced lunch, you should respond accordingly. So instead, we use the other ones that are something that we can find in our student information system. So we have it, but we don't make it a part of our instructional decisions.
But from a macro level, at the district level, that is something that's available?
That's correct, yes.
My second question is, do we make accommodation? And I just don't know the answer. Do we make accommodations for English language learners so that they have either tests in a native language, they have the ability to ask for clarification if they don't know the word? What's the, what's the process there to equalize the test for them?
Fair, really good question. And I mentioned earlier that we switched to the online version of the ISAS. One of the perks of the online version of the ISAS is there are a lot of built-in electronic accommodations, including text-to-speech. And so the rule of thumb is per the state, if a student is using text-to-speech modification or accommodation in their regular instruction, they have access to that during the state testing. So if they're using a translator, if they're using our read and write toolbar to have words read to them during the ISAS, they can have that as well.
So they can have a, and they are given this test in a way that they will know how to do that and use the translator than the, than the text-to-speech?
That's a trickier question. I mean, yes and no. The toolbar does mirror our current toolbar and our current instructional model. And teachers are asked to walk students through what some of the main features are. Text-to-speech is one of the most common ones. And so certainly students are usually given instructions on how to get there.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions and then a comment. First, did we, were nearly all of our students assessed in this process? Do we know?
Upwards of 95%, yes.
Okay. And the kids that were doing it online or were, everyone was doing it online?
Yeah, everyone was doing it online unless you had a certain accommodation for a paper pencil test, which is a small number.
Okay. So the kids that, particularly the high school kids that may have been at home doing it online, was there teacher interaction in helping them get set up and ready for the assessment? Or was it go to this website here?
Good clarification. The state did allow this past spring, for the first time ever, students to test online and remotely and at home. But it was only during the last two weeks of the testing window, and we didn't find that to be a very feasible option for us. And so we asked all of our students to come to a site.
Okay, so they all came.
And so they tested in a proctored environment in our buildings, although it was online.
Excellent, okay. I'm glad to hear that, that there was a teacher present. And then I really just, my comment is, I think our test scores, these assessment scores, we would of course like them to be higher. We fully understand that it was a very difficult year and a half. I guess my encouragement would be, we know that our teachers have been working very hard under very difficult circumstances. And if there is anything we can do to take something off of their plate so that they can focus on these important areas, and I understand that's a very fine line because there's the emotional, social well-being that we also need to be paying attention to. But if, if there's something we can do to help our staff really focus on these areas, I think they would appreciate it and I think the community would appreciate it.
Couldn't agree more. Teachers have been working in very tough circumstances and have done an outstanding job. Yes, sir.
What do you think's the difference between math and reading with math going down in every grade, but reading only going down about half of them? Is it just easier for kids to kind of keep up and read at home, whereas math instruction is something that is more specialized, I guess?
I can speculate if you'd like me to speculate. Okay, all right. So one, in reading and English Language Arts, the standards tend to spiral over time. And so you're learning the same types of things in English Language Arts, but just at a higher level of complexity. So if you have mastered main idea by the time you're in fourth grade, you're going to see different versions of main idea at different levels of complexity along the way. Same with citing evidence. So students who've gotten that skill tend to be able to just be able to transfer that skill further along. Math is not the same way. The skills are very different. Algebraic computations and things like that are different from number sense and operations that you might learn at elementary level. And so I think there is a different level of rigor and complexity to the way they build.
It was just, it was clear with math, with everyone going down, that something different was going on.
Agreed.
To understand that better. And then in terms of the gaps between race and English language learners and IEP, is there a significant overlap in those different groups? There are a lot of kids who fall into two or all three of those groups. Is there kind of a way to address, you know, that subset population that would bring it all up at once?
That is an excellent question. I don't know what the overlap Venn diagram of those different groups would be, but I know there is some significant overlap.
And then following up with that, with what Director Newman was saying in terms of socioeconomic and income and wealth data, you know, is that a confounding factor that's leading into all of those things is just something that kind of stands out to me. But I guess there's no answer to it right now necessarily, but just.
My hunch would be yes.
Okay.
If helpful, we could follow up with that sort of overlap data.
Yeah, just if there's, you know, whatever percentage of kids who are in all groups or two groups and, you know, not that we don't want to address every kid, but just whatever's working.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have a final comment. And I've said it, when the academic growth goals were first set last year, the year, no, the year before, two years ago, I thought and commented that I thought they were pretty extreme. I mean, you have to have a goal, right? You have to have a teaching goal. But I thought that the level, that the percentage of growth was large. It was, it was a high goal. So I would just like to, again, you know, we're having to learn how to be flexible in our new learning environment every day. It seems like a new flexibility. I would just like us as a district to consider to be a little flexible on those goals, all academic goals for growth, just so that we're not overwhelming our staff that are already running at capacity.
I think that's totally fair. And one of the disappointing parts about not having the growth measure from 2020 was we don't know how realistic or unrealistic that is on this new assessment because we haven't had a chance to see that pattern over time. And so I think that's totally fair and worth considering.
And then Director Rice, if I can just ask like a clarifying question. Page 14, the slide that you have.
Can you tell me the, I don't have them numbered here.
It's the 2020, 21, it's the comparison between Cedar Rapids and the state. So like reading, we got 59%. Yeah, this one. Would the goal be next year that we would come back and we would see 80s for all of Cedar Rapids?
Yes.
Is that what you're suggesting?
That is what I would love to suggest. Yes, yes, that is the goal. That is the goal. To Director Borcherting's point, it may not be feasible this year. I don't know of any systems that are making 20 percentage point growth, but that was the goal.
Just carrying on what she's saying, because when I look at this slide, you know, I look at those numbers and they are significant. I love setting aggressive goals, but I also want them to be attainable. And I want to have a clear path on how we would do that. Are there, when I look at the state, are there any districts in the state that have? Like who's doing the best and what are some of the best practices that we could be looking to?
That's a great question. So when these goals were drafted in the 1819 school year, our district had been around 70% proficient in each category for about eight years in a row. And so it did seem feasible that three years out, we could improve 10 percentage points if we'd been at 70%. That said, I think the events of life since 2019 have indicated that we may need to revisit some of those benchmarks and be realistic about where we are. So I think that's a great question.
Just to follow up with that piece, we did see growth, significant growth on the spring 2019 assessments, which significantly changed our Iowa school performance profile results. So for us, the science, research-based best practices have been through the High Reliability Schools framework and having a common instructional language through the new art and science of teaching. But the, for example, the literacy, targeted literacy instruction, making sure that we all know our standards and that we're assessing those standards. I think that there's some points been well taken. What assessments are we gaining the best information from at the teacher level so that we can continue to use that information to adjust our instruction and support our kids? This particular measurement, it's a requirement for us to do it, but it does allow us this dipstick of the comparison between us and everyone else in the state. Whereas Cedar Rapids owned assessments, we have some flexibility with that. And then our screeners, for example, the FAST screener is also a requirement that we have to do and does give us information that we can respond to. But the more time that we can give to our teachers to prepare, support, to align to a guaranteed viable curriculum and really great instructional practices, then they can really support our kids. So we do know what can work and that, those are the practices, I would say statewide, that we're sharing with each other of what best supports our students. The time has been so interrupted. So we, we've got, we have, we have to do better for our kids, but as everyone does. But our teachers really need time.
Any other questions? Once again, thank you so much. And I know eventually we're going to get some test scores in. I mean, because we have, we've gone through a lot, so I.
We'll be able to compare our fall to winter FAST screener assessment too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you all and have a great evening.